Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and turn on the cloud. I believe we just made a big mistake, so we had two hundred dollar referrals saying it's one nation. Maybe this is all that we're seeing in justice.
All right, council member Swanson had a change in plans tonight, so he will not be attending it virtually. So we will move on to consideration approval of the agenda.
I've got an addition. I'd like to take ten point ten off of the consent agenda and put it somewhere out there where we put it. I'll discuss that before we.
I think we should put on there eleven point two as old business, since we've been talking about it last couple.
I agree.
I would like to also add under consent. The smoking or smoke license.
Ten point thirteen.
Yes, please.
Another addition is I'd like to bump council member Hills' brief update from said council that turns up to whole business under eleven point.
I approve of that.
Is.
All right. Any other corrections or someone make motion to approve?
You'll tell one more time where did you want to take your discussion input at where?
Your eleven point three.
Eleven.
Under old business.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda when the stated changes.
No, certainly.
Right, that motion is from Gina and second for Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion case. Right, next we'll move on to public forum. This is an opportunity for citizens to present items to the council that are not on the agenda. Each presentation is limited to three minutes with a maximum fifteen minutes set aside. If your item needs follow up from the city, staff will arrange for that. Would somebody, anybody like to step forward for public forum? I'll ask again if anybody would like to step forward for public forum. And then I will ask for a third and final time if anybody would like to step forward for public forum. Hearing none, we will move on to item number six point one will be postponed until our August sixth meeting. I don't see a member of the sheriff's department here, so.
Well, Boston.
Yeah, the most council members have any questions or concerns?
Well, I don't know. I'm I'm a little disappointed. I think I think, you know, I think we pay enough money out that we deserve some kind of referred taxation out. I don't know what the sheriff and the and the and the chief deputy do at a lot of unions, but you know, we all put in a lot of time and extra meetings and stuff, and I know they have them too. I don't think that ours would be too above them not to come, so I would like to our staff to put an invitation out if if we can. Guys here, I want one of you guys.
Do you want to make a motion for that?
I do. I'll make a motion. I want the sheriff, the deputy deputies. I want to talk to them. I've got a list of stuff and I'm not, I'm tired of talking to the wall and there's nobody here, so.
I'll second that motion. I agree.
I don't understand the motion exactly. What's the motive?
I want a chief deputy or the sheriff here to talk to us. If our deputy that doesn't, that we're paying for to patrol our town can't come in and give us a report. And and because if you read that report that we get sent to us, that doesn't tell me a squat. There's nothing on there that gives me an indication of what's going on in this town.
So you just want to make the formal motion to invite them.
I want them here. That's right. I want to invite them. And and if they don't want to come, well, I guess we we know what we do next year when we start doing the budget, so that wouldn't be too hard for me.
In the next one.
You never know.
All right, I've got a motion from Dave and second for Kyle. Invite them to the meetings if a deputy can't be present. Any further discussion of that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, open carries. Right, any follow up, question, concern, or comments from the department reports?
I got I got a few things and somebody can go before me if they want. I think I got some for everybody sitting over there. Let's say escalate. No, I just, one question I have was on the ladder truck. When when was that estimated to be gone? You're the first one.
Mike and I were finally able to have a most of it, a good portion of a day pulling usable equipment, their ladders, fittings, and ozzles. This and that, we've got about another half a day and Maury and I actually talked the day about speaking of Mike and Paul the last. What do we have? Three things in there, three things on our list off of there on Friday. After that, it should be ready to go on the road.
Thank you. I was gonna, I talked to Adam a little bit on the side earlier today yesterday about about e-bike safety. I know he does his thing on the radio and it really is a nice segment. I enjoyed listening to it. I've seen a lot of problems with e-bikes around town and but that probably is more and that'd be another reason why I wanted a deputy here. So that maybe he could address that or the sheriff could address that because when I talked to the deputy about it, it was like, okay, I talked to a few people. I think I've got it solved. Well. I I watched another couple almost accidents this weekend and I'm I'm tired of people talking about it. In St. Paul, fourteen year old kid was. And and he had a thirteen year old passenger that was critically injured, scooting through, run through a stop sign and broadside it and killed. And the driver that hit him was not impaired. So I mean, these these kids don't understand that they're not going to be protected if somebody runs into them. And they're just flying around the streets like it's free rein and I think we got it. This isn't just another problem that's come upon us because of new technology. And I think we need to address it. A lot of cities are right now with ordinances. Not that we need any more ordinances on our book, but we got to do something. So so back to back to your latter point. She's Miller. You're going to have that down within the next, within thirty days. Is that plan?
Yes.
Okay. Like, yeah, I go, okay. Eight point three, that's the liquor store. Way to go. Way to go. Very pleased. And I think that shows that we we have good leadership. That's that's important.
I only notified council on the one day event. Would you like to update on the three, three day weekend? So the from the first to the sixth, we did a hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty nine dollars and we had twenty, twenty eight hundred and fifty five customers. It was smoking every day.
And the staff, mainly.
They're amazing. Yes.
Yeah.
Every Fourth of July, they have a little picnic in the back room. They bring in a George Foreman grill and hot dogs and and Captain Harrison have a picnic because they're working, but.
Well, I'm free next year. Just saying, I think Gina's got an opening too. Be around the liquor. On Brock, it looks like things are coming along on the beach. I'm really pleased with that. I have gotten some calls. I I thought I smoothed people over when they tell me, how come the bathrooms aren't open? How come this ain't done? How come that ain't done? I said, you know, first of all, Kate, this is this is our money. We we didn't get it in a timely manner. We tried to do what we could to get things done as fast as we could. We are working as far as as fast as we can and doing it to get this going. And I think most of the people understood, but that's just just for your own information and that's all. And I'm not on Facebook. My wife tells me, but I. That's that's just Facebook talks. I take it for what it's worth. Then there's one thing that with Sabbath, I know I didn't want to leave you up. Cannabis locations in town. Is there anybody thinking about it that's been heard?
We've actually had lots of lots of calls. A lot of people are looking more towards the freeways because that's pretty much all the other places we can handle.
Right, because of the schools and daycares and stuff, right? I was just wondering where we were with that, with with people inquiring. We're not, we're not exempt from this because if it's certain groups of people, they have the right to do it no matter, and we can't stop us.
I'll say I probably get two to three calls a week from developers wanting to know where they can go.
So do you have a map ready to?
I don't think I anything to chastise Maury for, so I'm good.
Her painting and crosswalks are.
Oh, oh, yeah, we did see some getting. I guess I'm pleased.
Stadium's wiping away today. That that would be. To it's just with our newly painted crosswalks and the conversations about, you know, adding art in them. And they just pay attention to the crosswalks. I walk almost daily and gosh, I would be dead. They just. And then one goes and the other one goes and I stand there with the lights flashing. So the more they could pay attention to people on the crosswalks too. And it was interesting to hear that other towns don't have that problem. Again, I've heard that other towns that are respectful of the crosswalks, so I don't know, a couple tickets, maybe, I don't know.
Right, any further follow up for the urban updates? Hearing none, we will move on to item number nine, the committee updates. We'll start off with public works committee.
Yeah, the very good meeting. Talked about a lot of different things and focused on the public very. Propose ordinance that that we're working on and. I that was, you know, we kind of agreed, we have a lot of the information to look at. We still have more information to look at. The letters from our attorney were handed out and some people got to see what their opinion was. And since then, our. President has weighed in for his his staff and he's against public art. So. I think it's, you know, everything that I've seen, you know, and we're 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 way in real heavily on on public safety. That I I just can't see. I I mean, we're not going to stop the yard ordinance or withdraw the yard ordinance. We just that. I think it's going to be very limited on what's what's allowed and what's not allowed. And and it all revolves around safety. So as far as anything else, we talked about Millamore Lay, some of the different projects. We talked about the three way lift station. A little bit on Fawn Meadows. Snow bombing, that's an ongoing thing. Some committees in the committee are working on some stuff. Other than that, truck route signs, that was pretty big. I've got some more information and I got more to bring back to the next meeting as far as truck route signs and. And trying to keep. Today I witnessed a truck going, big semi, long one, real heavy. Just he could have went back towards the freeway. He turned and went down 10th Street. And I and I really don't. Mind, it's just that I feel that, you know, it's too convenient for these people just to to take the easy route and not take the route that. Is less dangerous for the community and less dangerous for our roads. And so I I think it says something that we are going to pursue as a committee as far as public works, I intend to. And and that's it's going to be something that's going to be coming back to the council and I would say in the next few months, very strongly.
I I do just want to jump back. We talked about snow falling. Procedures out there and if there's ways to improve it or if we could update the policy. One of the items that the that the committee had talked about at length was that we need to start looking at updating or increasing the budget. There's some requests coming in from the county for sidewalks and and trails. Does public works have the staff for that? Is it something that we should consider contractors for sidewalks? But the ultimate conclusion is that when we talk about the budget, we should look at increasing the snowball, snowballing budget. And we should also look at what. We're not going to be able to come up with an exact cost of what a new plowing policy would would be, but if we can have that in place, we should be able to get some kind of rough general ideas from our public works there. So.
Well, and just to tag on to what you're saying as far as that, we also understand and that. We're in a delicate area with a river and two lakes. And and salt use, you know, this is one of the things, you know, I think our public works has done a really good job of trying to regulate salt. Use because of what it does to our fish and in our in our waters. But we also got to understand, we have to keep people safe. So there's a delicate balance there. I think I think we've achieved some of that, but maybe there's some things with the plowing policy that we can help fill in the gaps, but.
Last thing was the alfresco dining and you might see that there's reflected paintball there or the lights are on. That was requested, so nighttime drivers will be able to see those areas and not have an obstruction. So that is a change that I believe that's already heard on there.
Library committee.
Library committee was, we're meeting bimonthly. There was no new business to discuss. We're still waiting for lights to be installed. It's been since last winter, but I think we're closer to maybe getting a safety light installed and. That was nothing new in the business.
All right, and ordinance. We went through and discussed the public ordinance, went through the email from the county attorney and had some conversations about that. Adam gave us a presentation on some. We we brought back the international property maintenance code review as it was sent back to ordinance. So Adam kind of pulled out the pieces that. Deal with public safety and safety of the residents and staff program worked through and kind of twelve key pieces that aren't. Super crazy and and see if that would help in the future and see if we can wrap that into our code. We talked about alfresco dining as well a little bit. And looked at some truck route ordinances. Tabitha's going to do some work on that and see if she can bring it back in order and see if we can get. I think that was about it for ordinance, so. Next, we will move on to the consent items. Would someone like to make a motion to approve or?
I would just like to say I'd like to abstain just since I sit on the board for ten thirteen, so stay in the discussion.
I'll make a motion to help with consent items.
By Gina.
I'll say.
Second by Dave. Further discussion of those. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next we will move on to whole business eleven point one, request for council action fire building.
Tom, are you presenting?
I can.
Send this to the fire, or Tom, are you?
It doesn't matter.
I feel like the two of you are more knowledgeable.
If I might make a request though going forward, that would something that is almost blacked out, be alive is your. It's for the attached side. It's not in mind. It's almost kind of.
Noted. Thank you for that.
Mayor and council, this is, we had discussed this in the fire committee and just to start off with and the unpaid, uncollected. Fire bills that we've had over the years. It was recommended for the guidance of the. Auditors that the outstanding debt now over two years will be rep. So at this point, all. Attempts of collection have been exhausted at this point. As far as I know, Tabitha was working directly with our debt collectors, obviously.
So it's presented in twenty twenty three, all of these amounts, for most of these amounts were presented in twenty twenty three. Asking council what to do with them, council. Collections and we're still sitting on most of them.
This was a recommendation from the auditors to write out that it was over two years. Any questions, your council?
No, it just, it just amazes me because I feel like it was like four years ago that we did this. And it's already been since twenty nineteen. It implies it's crazy.
Any further discussion from council members? Any questions, concerns, to make a motion to approve?
I guess the only thing is that we've had discussions in the past about what we feel for and what we don't feel for. I think it does vary going back for discussions because we're consistently not getting full of billing for on certain items. I don't know if it makes sense to keep exhausting resources to try and build for. There's items that we might bill for on property taxes, but some items, I think we spend more staff time than what we actually receive in return. So I think we should probably have more discussions with that either at the fire committee level or. Guess more calls.
Do you do you see a pattern where the unpaid bills are?
I I think, yeah, I think that's maybe start without the fire committee and bring it back to council. We can go from there. Right, would someone like to make a motion to? Write off the steps. So I'll shoot by Kyle. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, guys. All right, next up is. Who take home vehicle policy?
So if I could, I think I've kind of started this little fire, but it kind of took a sideways direction from where it was presented in here. There seems over the years that there's been some confusion about who can take home a vehicle and who cannot take home a vehicle. And that areas has learned and there's been a lot of requests about taking home a vehicle. I don't know that I agree that any call, any on-call employee should have a take home vehicle. I understand emergency response. But if you have to be there within an hour and you can meet a public works within twenty five minutes and out the door in five minutes, you're still making that out. Now, what I do feel is that the fire chief and the public works director should have take home vehicle because of what they respond to. So this this strikes out the public works supervisor and leaves it up to the on-call employees, which I don't agree with. I think the on-call employees should be struck out and should be left in public works, public works direct. I don't think that an on-call employee should be able to take a vehicle.
So you're you're saying that whoever's pulling call as far as public works on the weekend would not take a vehicle. If they've, some of them, from what I understand, some of them do and some of them don't. So. But you're saying they shouldn't be allowed to at all?
If we gotta, if they gotta go out within an hour, they should be being close enough that they can respond and they can still go on from the public works building to the cup. And the city is only what, three miles long and two miles wide? It's not Minneapolis. The difference with the public work supervisors is that they're going straight out to start patrolling for pulling vehicles. If they have a water tower crack, you're going to go right there. You're going to start calling assets and resources. You're not going to be having a paid on-call employee start making million dollar decisions if we have a massive break.
So maybe Maury can help me with this because I, this is one thing I was wondering about. As far as on-call, who's who is considered on-call, Maury, in your department? I mean, are you considered on-call? Is it just a weekend person?
I'm, yeah, I'm on-call twenty four hours.
I'm, yeah, I'm on-call twenty-four seven, but. The on-call um labor union staff are the other five employees. They take it on a rotating basis.
So is there anything that when? And all I, I remember, I know when things like um. That I think the main thing that we, that that somebody gets notified is when the skate assist on goes. Nuts and says there's something not working right. Who gets, who gets, who gets the uh the notifications of that? As that go, if it's a weekend person, does the weekend person get the notification or does the? Do you get it first and then it goes downhill or? Where's the chain of command there?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, but.
And then if, like, say if I'm out of town. Um, whoever is watch or taking my phone.
Yeah.
It's going to others.
Okay.
But it automatically, if you were around, it would go to you. And and if if it comes in and that something needs to be switched, needs to be turned. Then do you call out a person or do you just go and do it?
Typically, I just go.
Okay, that's to answer my question. Thank you.
So it'd be my recommendation that the fire chiefs and the public works director still have to take on vehicles, put take on vehicles for any other employees unless they. It's actually for emergency. I think that would be a formal motion.
That's my motion.
Motion, Kyle, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Supposed, motion carries. All right, next we will move on to eleven point three, three fifteen purchase agreements.
Um, last week, um, the purchaser was given a fourteen-day um request to have the purchase agreement brought back to us. Um, and we agreed. Uh, we started the title work, so that is prepared for once the. First screaming gets into our hands for council review and then the interim review. The title work will be already prepared.
What is the timeline? From when when it's signed and handed over to us because?
Once everything's agreed and signed on by both parties, it will still probably be thirty days.
I mean, is that a hard deadline? Because the the concern I have is that we're coming up in August. If this gets drawn out into winter, win- winter, we're not planning on heating that and no budget for it. I mean, now do we have to stick in the budget, hope we can renegotiate the coconuts later on? Or what? So we need to have a hard deadline.
So I had a conversation today with uh Leslie and she said that. He talked with three companies very commonly, and the next list of states that we got. It's one like a show, but we could still put a. September first, September thirtieth deadline on the transaction, if that would be.
Put that on there and if they don't meet it by September first, then the agreement in my mind would be null and void.
Only, only caveat that I would mention to that is if. That were to fall through and we're starting back from square one and making that determination whether we want to keep building. Keep the water on or what we want to do.
Has um Mr. Bruce given us any reason to doubt that he's unwilling to?
It is confident, but I like set numbers. We should have had a timeline, a due date for this when we first issued it right away. Uh, September first, you're gonna start, you can look at heating and keeping the water on real fast, so. If we don't have an answer by then, it's uh, we're probably gonna be geeked.
Yeah, I'm I'm agreeing with September first deadline. It sounds like we're. Just about there, so that happens, everybody speaks to the fire a little bit, I'm I'm comfortable with that. Do we need that in form of a motion? Do you want to make that motion, Kyle?
September first is a hard deadline.
Motion for Kyle.
I'll say.
Session from Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
She is here. All right, um, next we will move on to new business twelve point one, SEH mill and over with.
Anyway, the bids come in. Um, I do want to note. We did have two hundred feet of curb and gutter replacement, which I don't think there's that much, so. Price could be a little better than what it is. But we are under budget. Um, Greg went through all the tallies and recommends going to the low bin. Uh, Weinberg Companies LLC of Shaffer.
Have we worked on that in the past?
We haven't, but they're just the dirt guys. They're actually having a nice favorite painting. So it's, it's quality work.
I have heard that night service getting a break here.
They're high especially here. Oh, they could get bigger, but if they want to get bigger.
Right, thanks, Maury. I need questions, comments, concerns from council?
Absolutely. So in the next process, we have public, public meetings to tell the neighborhoods or. I mean, we're we're not assessing it, but.
Right, and there will be some, there will be notification.
Oh, yeah.
The streets should be reclaimed and put back pretty.
You know, but are we gonna tell people what we're doing? I mean, I I'm not criticizing the process entirely, but I. Just with the street we had on Tenth Street, there was a lot of hiccups.
Yeah.
And and too many hiccups as far as I'm concerned. So I just would like to see a smoother process.
That was a full reconstruction, but what we could do is we could put it out on the website and maybe ask the radio and the newspaper to maybe mention or to consider mentioning. Or or notices.
Yeah, and we could maybe get a letter together and handle it room. Six, six people, seven people.
Sounds like a little that, right?
Yeah, I mean, holiday and Federated and College and Bank are bringing out. See the most effective, like I said. Back fairly quickly, I mean, most likely in the same day. And then they'll be doing some subgrade work and and then paid, so. It's not gonna be like a full reconstruction and having, you know, trenches everywhere.
Water hooked up.
Yeah, right.
All three to. For this, do I control?
I'll make a motion to approve speeches. Weinberg. Uh, Stephen and him on a state.
I'll say.
Motion by Gina. Second by Dave. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, next up is twelve point two, resolution to forgive funds and transfer fund, forgive funds and transfer funds to another city account.
This is a request by the auditors to close out for the audit for twenty twenty-four. Moving funds needing permission to do this.
This is the.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's also for the Rome, uh, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street project, that's the reasoning behind it, so it go to clear out that. Fund in the four thirteen fund.
This was that that two fifty-eight and that was pulled up the Gem Fund.
Yes, we've already verbally approved it.
This is in addition to the one for twenty-three. This is all, sorry, I didn't mean to like.
No, thank you.
This two fifty-eight, so last year it was two forty, two hundred and forty thousand, I think is what we forgave from the Gem Fund.
Could you jump forward? I know that was a concern to be able to hear things out of online, so. Thank you.
So this two hundred and fifty-eight, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, sixty-two cents is the amount that we paid out in twenty twenty-four with the street project. I think I told you guys when we were, did the other resolution of giving the amount from twenty-three. That we would have some more expenses from twenty-four, because that's when we closed it out, so the final. Is it the final melan overlay that gets done? In like, like, what is, what's finishing up in twenty-four, that twenty-four street project, is this the melan overlay part of it?
No, that would be. Either finishing touches of.
Ten street, yeah.
It's usually paid out for the work that's been done. Then when they put the wear course on. There will be that payment.
So this is basically what this is that they finished up in twenty-four. The expenses in twenty-four.
And is this in addition to the two forty-eight that we?
The two forty-eight you guys already forgave, uh, that came out of the Gem Fund. This is asking to forgive this amount from the Gem Fund again.
This came out in twenty-one and twenty-two.
This is for the twenty-one, twenty-two street project that was not wanted for.
When did that come out of the budget?
This came out in twenty-four.
So that's why it says adopted and be effective for the twenty twenty-four audit here, because that's fine.
So it's incorporated into our audit.
It'd be a little.
Yeah, no.
And our auditor was the same as last year, correct?
Correct.
Should they not have caught this sooner?
Should they not have caught?
Should they have caught this sooner?
That we spent this money in twenty-four?
So we spent the money in twenty-four, but we're having it as an audit in twenty-four.
It was caught, it was spent in twenty-four. This amount is twenty-four. The one that you guys forgave, where I think we did in December. You guys forgive that from twenty-three.
Those are. Call Avenue, wasn't it?
And I believe this.
This is, yeah. Twenty-one.
No, no. We know who to blame there, but I'm not gonna say.
All right, now any further questions or would someone like to make a motion to? For tonight, motion, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Well, she's such a nice. Wait, yes, I'll make that.
Dave, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second from Gina. Any further discussion? This is a resolution, so we'll proceed with a roll of vote. Kyle?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, that motion carries. Right, next we will move on to twelve point three, resolution accepting donations to the city of Pine City.
This is a resolution to accept, we did a mass resolution for donations that have come in. Um, there's an anonymous donation from a resident for flower baskets and then a one from a business for flower baskets. Pine City Lions Club gave a donation to the park equipment at the Lions Park. The Pine Area Lions Club donated. Uh, money for the Lions Park improvements, so this is acknowledging these donations.
All decided this, how are we um acknowledging this donation? I mean, are we? In our websites or putting out to the newspaper, we sending a thank you letter?
There's no policy for it. My thought was to send a thank you note.
I think we should also make it public knowledge to. Through social media so that people can appreciate donations.
That's an idea.
We put on your log. What do you call it?
Scrolling message.
Scrolling message board. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
All right, we've got a motion from Gina, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second from Kyle. Uh, any further discussion? This is a resolution, so we'll proceed with our local vote. Kyle?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
And I'd also vote yes, that motion carries. All right, next we will move on to twelve point four, request for council action fiber optic joint powers board dissolution.
So this board was established back in the nineteen nineties, um, because of that dark fiber, uh, fiber optics, and there was a board. To oversee this between both the county, the city and the school, or no, I'm sorry, the college. So now that that um has been sold to Medco, there's no longer a real need for this board, so we're asking council to approve. Um, terminating or. This board. The uh, the college has already approved, given permission for this, and this will also be going to the county board this month for approval as well.
Well, I think the history has shown there was an inconvenience anyway, so. It's kind of clearing up, clearing up some gray areas there, yeah.
I mean, the motion that we dissolve it from the city's standpoint.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion from Kyle. Second, Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Who cares? All right, next up, twelve point five, soil borings and topology evaluation, topography evaluation for Pickleball.
So Brock and I met with four of the members of the group last week. Um, where they're at now is um. Finding out if the soil is compatible for this project. They're at a standstill till they know that. Able to do, move forward, and then they'd go on to the engineering drawings. Um, they are requesting assistance from the city, and I thought I would bring it to you with a couple options, because to have the borings done and the top- topography studied. Come to eleven thousand dollars. Um, so there's a couple options. If the city wants to proceed, they can offer to pay for that. There's an option to pay half. Five hundred dollars, or there's an option to assist with this project.
Is is there anybody?
No.
So. When this was presented to us, it was brought to us by Pickleball. They presented it to us that what we needed was grass cutting and garbage removal. And a site to put it in.
A site.
They were gonna fundraise for everything else and. In my mind, if you need a soil flooring test, then you should probably be fighting for that and putting it into your your fundraising event. The other concern I have is that we're not going out to every organization that's out there and and putting in development for those organizations. There was. Organization that we did, that was a power agreement with four different entities, and they brought most of that. So I don't think that we should be doing anything with Pickleball and we should put the expectation that this is their responsibility.
That memory doesn't always work, because we should. Is there any questions asked by, I don't know if I asked it or somebody else in the council. Is there anything else you need? We do, I mean, we have the budget for it. Now granted, we have stuff that comes before us that we don't have a lot of time to budget for. But this, this could have been, this could have been something that we budget for. I mean, I would have rather seen a request to put it in our budgeting cycle for next year. I, I'm not saying it would pass, but uh. I'm definitely not gonna vote for it at the spur of the moment. I I don't, we we don't have the money in the budget for it, I know that. I don't even have to ask Nicole about that, so.
Uh, there is an option to, I mean, we could move funds to.
With all the discussions that we've had with nonprofits and donating to them, it's a very strict rule, and does that flow into that? We fell apart once, one point I developed some rec, and I know that's a concern. There's so much gray area here with a nonprofit. My expectation again is that this is something that they need to plan for. If they're gonna propose it, then they fund. And it sounds like there might also be some concerns with the water table up there. And so if we invest this money and that doesn't pan out. I'm a little bit worried about it, so.
I see it a little. We own the land, and I feel like the the boring sample um would be ours and tell us what we could possibly do with that site that we could own, so if. If we have that sample, then we could move forward with something else if Pickleball didn't work out, so I. I see it a little different, like I don't see it quite as a donation, but us taking care of our property and, you know, kind of meeting them halfway.
Yeah, I'm, I, I will say that. But I, I didn't. I wasn't opposed to covering the eleven thousand dollars. I know we will, we should have some funds coming in from the. Eighteen, hope, hope and dream on funds that are coming in here, but we should have some funds coming in from the three fifteen building that could. Be used to cover those costs because you're not supposed to, for your Dallas, you're not supposed to use a one-time payment to balance your budget.
Be used to cover those costs because you're not supposed to, for your Dallas, you're not supposed to use a one-time payment to balance your budget. And I am kind of also fall on the side of it's our land, maybe we should know what's underneath there. Uh, but I do see your point as well, Kyle, that. To this, if our test wants to do a donation of cash money in some sort of. So I, I could be swayed either way at this point, but I, I would lean towards the, the covering half personally, but that's just.
Well, you know. I'm not a great surgeon, I guarantee you that. But just look across the street with, with QuickTrip's doing, they're sucking out water, trying to balance the, the. The solids and, and what they got going on. I, I think it's gonna be pretty close to the same issue on the other side of the street. I don't think we're gonna find out anything other than the fact that if we wanted to do anything with that property, we're gonna have to do. Pile leads or we're gonna have to do some kind of new technology and it's not gonna be, we're not gonna gain anything by spending eleven thousand dollars. I, I. Whatever. I think that's my opinion.
If you approve this, you're gonna have to approve every request going forward for the next organization that comes in and says they want some type of tests and assistance. And who knows, Pickleball might come back and say that they want engineering support and where are you gonna draw the line? So are we gonna approve this one, deny everybody going forward? Are we gonna deny everybody and accept everybody going forward? And that's what tests are, are doing is now developing. Not paying for snowballing and urban streets and, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I, I can agree. I can see both sides, hundred percent. I, uh. It's a back of the top. It was my understanding that kind of the Pickleball would do a. Joint Powers or some sort of, like, they would take care of the. Paddles and balls and nuts and things like that, but that, that would be a city owned, like the racquetball already used to be, you know, like that, that would be owned by the city and they would have. Final say, if it's owned by the city. That's where, that's just what takes me to think, yeah, we should take a part of it, but if it's, if it's going to be solely owned by Pickleball, that's the conversation.
The land is always gonna be owned by the city and it's always gonna be a city thing. They're donating money to create it. So that's the part that I've been striving for is that we can change it. I know that they wanna put in, in stone that for the next one thousand years it stays as that, but I believe there was a brand out there before to have a basketball put in and that is talking about moving for Pickleball, correct?
Brock, um, do you have to do the borings and the topography at the same time? Are they, are they intrinsically linked together with the knowledge of going forward or? Because could we just do the borings and do a half?
Yeah, they. And they, their goal would be to have both of these testings done. So this summer, so that we give them the winter to do the engineering plans.
Other thing is that we just moved what, point four million dollars from the water and sewer funds to cover a different problem? And then we gotta pay that back. So we got an extra eleven thousand sitting around. We're gonna be increasing. To make up that two point four million dollars or if we put that eleven thousand back, back there?
Well, I think it's a bargain for the city because we could get our boring center topography done for half price if we split it with them.
And if it turns out to be contaminated soil that we have to put a million dollars in to remediate. That could be a bad thing too. How many gas stations were there back in the day days?
Twenty-seven at my city at one time.
All right, is there any further discussion on this or would some people motion on where or the other?
I'll make a motion that the city offers to pay for half the boring and topography costs for Pickleball. Or for that, not for Pickleball, for the.
Motion by Gina to cover half of soil boring and topography costs of the. Beach property potential for Pickleball courts. Do I have a second? I will second that one. Right, uh. All those in favor, please signify, or is there any further discussion?
We beat it up.
All right, uh, all those in favor, please signify and say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Those opposed?
Aye, aye.
So I would vote again. Except, all right, and I would vote in favor of donating, sorry, excuse me, not. Dollar department's there, topography, dollar, soil boring and topography.
And when, when did the mayor have the ability to break the tie? I'm curious.
In a tie vote.
A strong mayor. The South Mayor's ship, the council.
Also same vote.
The four council members would vote and if there's a tie vote, the mayor would, would break the tie. I would have to disagree that the mayor has the ability, it's one vote, to break the tie. If you're saying that they do, I would like. I would like an opinion from the attorney saying that he has the ability to do that, but we have full council. Otherwise, we would have been able to break ties going back the last, I don't know, hundred years.
That's what I interpreted too, so.
All right, let's move on to twelve point six, uh, utility bill, we don't have any more discussions.
It was brought to my attention that if you are a resident and you know, came into land system for a significant amount of years, it terminates. Inspiration made. So, um, I reached out and they, the billing system claims they notify the resident. I cannot confirm or deny that that's true. Um. The people I have spoken with did not receive notifications. So I think that what we should move, moving forward, we should just put the notice on the billing. Cause it's like a free advertisement. Your water bill is free advertising. We can put that in this.
Roy, how long you had auto payments? Approximately?
I have no idea. I, I, this is my. Would I say? Yeah, that's licensed, but I'm saying. About fifteen years.
That's what I would say too. I bet you could have been with them for fifteen years.
So this, this is probably just starting for us then, you know, like.
I mean, I don't think it's any different than when, I think everybody here has auto payments on whatever bills that I think he personally. And the only time I find it on is when, when they change is when I, they give me a new bank card and it doesn't get sent. So I'd be like, you know, all of a sudden you haven't paid your gas bill, you know? I tried to, I thought you were taking the money out.
So this, uh, was brought forward just for kind of informational purposes, okay? You've probably gotten those, right? Or you, or at least.
Yeah, I want you to release a to get, I don't know, I can notice on the water bill. It's the easiest way to do it cause the water bills are already going out, so.
Attached it to the email, for those that get the email, their bills in the email too is a line on there?
It would also be good to put it out on social media because the whole point is that people have to log into their account to double check that they're auto paid so that. We, I don't want anybody to be penalized for that, so we need to make sure of that.
Perfect, any more discussion on twelve point six? Now we can move on to planning community development and engineering business, uh, thirteen point one, ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine, filling in grades.
So for about the last eight or nine months, um, we've been questioned on our billing and grading limits. We have a fee for it, it's based on, we're supposed to have a permit for it. The city currently does not. Um, so we have an ordinance committee and planning. We have been working through many different other cities, what they have in place, um, ordinance review. Came up with a great permit and a great ordinance and it was public hearing at the June planning commission meeting and it passed on to you guys.
It's different from what we had in the past and is it different than the state statute?
It mostly resembles the state statute. Um, it follows, I even reviewed it with the Minnesota V N R on the erosion and pollution patrol stuff, um. I don't know what the city had prior. I couldn't find anything. I mean, it just kind of reiterates the state statute mostly. Instead of the state statute saying a higher cubic yards, it was dropped down to fifty. So we went a little bit stricter than the state statute.
So this doesn't, doesn't affect me wanting to, um, make a well hill garden or something in my yard?
Not unless you're gonna have eight plus dump truck loads haul them to your property.
There you go, the extra lot.
I had twenty-seven dump trucks hauling to my yard, but not. Not to be killed. Okay, I'm just worried, I just don't want it to be overly restrictive or, you know.
Call, if somebody wants to call, you know, dump truck load a plus five into the driveway, they don't have to do anything.
Black dude on my grass.
Yeah, nothing like, this is like extensive. We had a house come down. They wanted to know what to fill it with, what our requirements were, this and that. They were pulling on the basement. We had nothing to give them other than to follow the state statutes.
Uh, any questions, concerns, comments from the council members?
No, I don't like, I think over the years it was always kind of misunderstood. I, as far back as I can remember, people would come into the office and ask about building grade for that. There was always, it usually got shot to the, or shot, sent to the building official and he would ask him, well, what are you doing? Well, I. How much? Well, we're gonna bring in a bunch of gravel, how many loads and that's the way it was done. I mean, it wasn't, there wasn't a lot of science to it because. But there was never any paperwork, I think, until now. I think, I think it's, it's good that we have some kind of an ordinance that, you know. When I did my driveway here recently, I needed to have some kind of a cover for the, the water shut off. I get more. I'd act and more and see what was going on and promptly fine me for not doing things properly. I don't, I'll get over it, though, go over it. No, I was, it just, it's good that, you know, our, our city crew knows what's going on and they make sure that. You know, generally the, the contractors that, that are doing the work are licensed with the city and they, and they, and they, they do an annual license and. And they know, if they don't do a license, then they have, cause when I filled out my permit. My contractor and what they, and I didn't know his license number and stuff, but Lisa knew it and, and put it on there and that took care of the problem, so. I think it's important that we know who's doing the work and that they, they're qualified to do the work, so.
All right, someone like to make a motion? Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine. I'll make it.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave. Second by Kyle. Any further discussion? Uh, ordinance needs to be roll call vote.
Right.
Okay, uh, we will start with Kyle.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, that one carries. All right, next up is thirteen point two, ordinance then at twenty twenty-five dash ten, uh, for code thirteen point seven six five one five zero, building size and protectional requirements.
So with this one. Been talked about multiple times in ordinance review, we had a presentation went from river, um, the city can't legally tell anybody how to build their home. They have to provide how they're going to make it code efficient. Um, we had the ordinance that's before you. And we are slightly making the little bit of change just to restrict some of the zoning, what we can legally restrict.
Questions, comments, concerns from council members?
Just, uh, the only question I have was, so, so Rum River makes the final determination that this is okay to build this, so that's. But it, it's gone, it's gonna be going through the planning commission anyway, right? Or will it have to go through the planning commission, that permit or not?
If it's being placed in a P U D, yes, but we don't really regulate home building.
I don't, I wonder, what, what triggers that it has to have a review? Okay.
I'm gonna start smoking a bit, coughing up. Or, from my understanding, for number three that was struck or appearance of wood in the basin area. So you're saying that it can be built up in much anything?
If they can provide it or show that it's code efficient. We cannot tell them, I mean, if they provided code efficient to build a outside cardboard box, we can't tell them no.
Well, I've seen some of those around.
So how does this with the international property maintenance, or, sorry, butchered it, like, how does that work? If, uh, the building material is basically light conditions, you're gonna have a battling of the two different ordinances?
Good question.
This was kind of. Building code and I don't know building code, I'm gonna be honest.
This, this conversation kind, kind of started with, um, I think you had a request the same time I had the thought of. It's kind of common, the, the new, one of the new trends or fancies, the, the post frame style or tin on the, like a shit house or a house. Um, we don't have anything in our code stating that a metal exterior, your home would be allowable. Uh, so changing this or modifying this, and see, it could be tin, but it can't be the same tin that you put on your bar with the exposure screws. It's gotta be a standing seam.
Well.
But it just looks like wood, so that's where the.
Right, well, I mean, we do have quite a few newer homes or recited homes in this town, in this community that they don't look like wood or acerite at all. And so we currently are allowing homes to be built or recited. Um, kind of, we have.
So also make it out of glass if they want it.
Yes.
That'll, we had on this, to your point, uh, what I've seen in the property maintenance code is that. Code tells about maintaining the exterior of, of the building. So it doesn't dictate whether inciting, uh, rig or base, we just wanna maintain. Um, so if there was a tinsided building, we don't want one rusted out, falling off, so you have a gap, showing structural numbers, that's the main thing. So I, I don't necessarily know if it's cardboard, but, uh, one of the new materials out there, they are talking about like a foam or styrofoam thing. If, I mean, what are we gonna use as that to determine whether or not it's light or being maintained or are we gonna evaluate that sort of thing?
We'll see what, uh, code comes out on the subject. Does, does, um, Andy and Rum River have any experience with this anywhere else? I mean, I'm not saying that, uh, we need to have that.
Now we're kind of paving the way on this one.
I don't quite like that. Yeah, paving thing.
I'm kind of wondering why we have to figure the way on this if nobody else is there yet, but.
Well, other communities don't, didn't have the strict in or the, so, old that states pass to have the appearance of water basin rating.
What do the other cities have in place?
Just allow people to build whatever they want.
Is there, is there somebody that requested or is requesting something? Is this one?
We did have a few different people actually reach out and request what our building standards are and.
Man, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, if, if we go this route, I'd like to see the property maintenance going up. So then you can have some rules in place that doesn't turn into much cardboard.
Well, I mean, it is overseen. I, I don't foresee cardboard being a thing that's gonna be code efficient. Truthfully, but.
It would, would it still fall under, even if we didn't adopt the IPMC, wouldn't it still fall under our. Exterior property maintenance ordinance that says there can't be any tripped peeling cracks down your exterior.
Well, that's, that's probably easy to say, but I think I could go around town and give you about two dozen of those right now.
Don't, don't look at my salt side notes.
No, well, I was, I was gonna bring it up, but I didn't, but no, I, I, I don't, I don't put a lot of.
I, for one, I'm, can't afford less restrictions than more, um, understanding that it's overseen and kind of going to follow code. I will go ahead and make a motion to accept this ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two, with the number three.
Now, a motion from Gina.
I'll second this for purpose of discussion.
Second, from Dave, all right, any further discussion?
No, I have some more discussion. I, I'd rather see like, uh, person, I'd rather see the, the property. first said, I'd rather see the the property maintenance code pass first. I I I wouldn't have a problem with this as long as we have some something in place that guarantees that we can, we have some kind of regulations on this or some kind of oversight.
You do have, I mean, you guys, the city has adopted the Minnesota State Building Code.
I know that, but this is above and beyond.
In case you didn't know about that.
I have two week codes. I don't know. I just, I I really feel that that we're we're maybe one step ahead than we should be, I think. Adopt the property maintenance code and I would I would I would like to uh have some conversations with with Andy Schneider. I mean, I myself, I I just think I'd like to see his feelings on it. What did he say? I mean.
He him and his team were both very excited that and very happy that the city was putting this in place.
If the city puts it, plus they have it put in place.
Correct.
But.
Forward in the process.
You got stock in the current work company here.
You can talk about the the controls that we'll currently have in place, but there's a number of properties throughout town that we've struggled with and it's taken years of process. I wish that we would have the international property maintenance code replaced before we adopted this, just so that we have the better controls in place.
Um, what would we like to do to proceed? Should we proceed with, I guess, one?
Well, we do have a vote for the second, so yes, we can vote on.
Vote for them second. Um Gina could possibly modify her motion to table it until we get further along with the IPMC.
I think you have to act on the motions that you have on table on this thing. Do you want to modify it?
I'm comfortable with this because I believe we have enough oversight. So I'd like to just see, see what happens.
Okay. Any further discussion from council members? Here now, this is an ordinance, so we'll proceed with roll call, roll call vote. Kyle?
No.
Dave?
No.
Gina?
Thirty seven in votes.
Well, this is the way they have to vote.
Oh, okay. I vote yes.
Right, we're.
Yes, I will also vote yes.
There's another one.
And I have verification that um on a vacancy, the mayor can break that tie vote, but when it is a a motion or a resolution, it needs to be a majority vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that motion would.
Is it an actual vacancy though, or is it just an absence of of council?
That's good. Let's just finish. Yeah, so this, so.
That is fail. Uh, right, uh, let's move on to council concerns, um.
There's another ordinance.
There's another one.
Time's another one. Ordinance amendment twenty twenty five dash eleven accessory buildings in our one and our two districts.
It was accessory buildings must follow fire code that just failed, so.
We need to take action on.
You couldn't table that if you'd like to?
I would I would make the motion that we table that item. Until we can take further action on the international property maintenance code.
Alright, I've got a motion from Kyle to table until we're further along with the IPMC. Uh, do you want your second? Second from Dave. Right, let's see, roll call. Do we need to do a roll call table?
Well, no, we're not approving.
All those in favor, table it, please. Stick it by my same time. Those opposed?
Aye, because I mean, options like that, I wanted to stay true to myself.
Good girl.
Alright, thank you. Next, we will move on to number item fifteen, council member concerns. Uh, Councilman Swanson had a discussed scheduled special closed meeting with city attorney regarding Thomas Park. Uh, do we want to take action? Do we want to throw a couple of dates out?
I think we should move the meet in July. There in June, we took action to challenge it, and there was also some feedback from the Moby of God Alex that I would like to discuss with the attorney to get better clarification because there's a lot of information in there and it's interesting. So I would like to see that go in in July, be four months.
Looking for a certain day or in evening time, daytime.
I think those are pretty good.
Do we have to have council president? So. Does he have to be there? I mean, do we need to be a party?
He he wants to discuss this picture.
So that that might dictate the date, so I guess that's why.
Well, he asked for some ideas from council.
Oh, okay.
And I'm going to meet.
Can we do it before council?
Well, we don't have another.
We don't have a meeting until August. August sixth. I could do it August sixth.
Well, that that's the point, because I think we need to address in July, not in August.
You just want to have a second meeting in July, I don't know where you're going.
Well, we had five in two and so.
Okay, I understand.
Alright, I'm pretty open. If my calendar goes, I'm pretty open next week. The last week does of August, uh, July does not work for me at all. Um but next.
I am. Are you talking next week, like what? Twenty, like next week, the twenty first or next?
Well, next week, Thursday and Friday would not be available. We're up the majority of us.
I was looking at the the week of the twenty first.
The week of the twenty first. Uh, Monday and Tuesday evening available.
Oh, Monday.
Depending on the time, because some of us have a council uh fire meeting. So so we need to be done by six thirty.
Okay, start at four to.
Four, five, score thirty okay with you?
Four, five. I I don't know how long it's, they're just giving us interpretation of of the documentation, correct?
You worked that day?
Oh, I have those two. I have ones my day out. I love nothing. I would.
Twenty first is a good option for all of you.
It is so very likely.
Twenty first or twenty second thing. I have your thirty first, I think works okayish for everyone. Uh, twenty first and twenty second work well for me. You guys have fire.
Twenty first is my day out and then I work.
We just have to get to Higley by seven P M.
Let's have it at six thirty.
Yeah, or five?
Yeah, four, four thirty or five, four forty five. Give me just a second, we have to get there.
Four forty five or?
We can do, we could do four thirty. I can cut out over to.
You could do five too.
I mean, five's in time. I don't think it'll.
I think it'll be super.
I didn't know if they wanted earlier or not, but.
Five works.
Okay, yeah, five works for me. Um, will you verify that'll work with?
Yes, we'll reach out tomorrow.
And that's gonna be at here or up at?
This this would be a closed.
It's a closed.
Yeah, we could do it at Hilltop.
Because then I'll.
Did I just say Hilltop?
Hillside.
They gotta come up with hard names.
You just tell them this week.
Alright. Um, then next up, we have something up in Hill, building key security call.
Yeah, I I put this in there because of obvious uh of the issues that we had up at Hilltop and I I just uh I just wanted to know what our policies. I mean, I I remember what it was years back, but that's years back. So I I I and so I would have given a copy of uh sign on forms, which I think covers it. I have a lot of time to look at it. So I that was my, that was why I brought it. I was gonna talk about it. If we didn't have a policy or we didn't have a form of some kind, maybe we need to do one, but that was my only reason for asking for that to be put on.
On that item. Here, now, would somebody like to make a motion for the chair?
So.
Second.
Motion from Gina, was it David, somebody? All those in favor, please stick your type of saying aye.
Aye.
I mean, I'm.
Anybody want to stack chairs?
I I knew that, that's why.